We will call the committee of the whole meeting together. I know Mr. Bonsel said he couldn't make it tonight and Mr. Sankar is probably on his way.
He has trouble traveling all the time.
I'm sure.
The earlier the more.
I'm sure. So, I'm going to turn this over to April and Anna Merritt. They've been working on some figures for us to take a look at.
Okay, so April is passing out a draft of what has been being worked on. This includes the general fund and other funds that were -- that placed you into fiscal emergency. So, first of all, I kind of wanted to thank all the departments who have helped work on this and help us to perform our analysis and provide documentation in getting these numbers presented here tonight. City Auditor's Office, City Treasurer's Office, the Mayor's Office, Safety Service, as well as some of you on council as well. This has been a large undertaking. We asked lots of questions. We asked for lots of documentation. We asked lots of questions. So, this is why...
That's what you live for a living.
Yeah, right? I might be an auditor. So, that's why, you know, we wanted to make sure that what's being presented is reasonable based on some of the knowledge and documentation and other things that we've learned from the city. Also, what we started with was the recovery plan that Jim Stith had actually presented to council. That was the starting ground. As you can see, we do have three years of actual and then there's five years forecasted. In the historical period, we went back and did some analysis there to make sure things are presented the way they were presented in the financials. That was, you know, got that from the Auditor's Office. His presentation and ours is slightly different from what he did earlier. We kind of group revenues together and then you'll see we have departments and then we go personal service, contractual service, material supplies under those departments, kind of like what you do for your appropriations. So, it's very similar to that, but we have that for all the funds whereas normally you have it down to that detail for the general fund and any levy type funds or payroll funds. So, there are some variances there. Also within this, you know, that was presented, I think, early in the year that Jim had presented that to you guys or the Finance Committee. We've come in, we've looked at five months of actual, we've had all those payables paid so we know what was paid that was really due from prior years, which had a lot to do with high police and fire pension, as well as some employee buybacks and things like that. Those have all been built into the 2017 forecast, plus we have actual information up through May and then forecasting forward on what has been presented to us through conversations, documentation, looking at the approved appropriations by council that has happened in 2017. So, what you have presented as what you thought needed to happen based on those numbers, looking to make sure that things that were in those were accounted for in the recovery plan as well. So, right now, this is the best outlook that we know of known factors. So, this is based on unit contracts. This is based upon things like the payables we've already talked about and getting those paid up to date in 2017 and going out further. This can all change with different information. We like to call this a living, breathing document because what we know today may change three months from now. But we have to have a starting point. We have to have a place to move forward and see where we are. With the payment of the payables, we were able to see really where the city has been. We've talked a lot about that in the commission meetings if you have been there. So, that has helped kind of gather information and see where you really stand financially. This is the city's plan. This is in draft discussion. All we have done is provided an analysis and a presentation for you guys. This is for you to discuss, to see where you are based on the knowns and where things are tracking currently going forward. Does that make sense? This is for you to determine what needs to happen with the city to then come out of fiscal emergency. And so, we're going to kind of go through these funds and I'm going to go a little backwards from what I passed out. So, I would like for you, just to get started, to pull out D, E, F, and G, which are the Crime Prevention Fund, Recreation Fund, EMS Fund, and the Bond Retirement. Yeah, and it's up in the corner is where the D, E, F, G is. Okay. These funds, you're going to see them this one time and we're not going to talk about them anymore. That's kind of why I'm getting them out of the way. Plus, we'll just, you know, ease our way into all this. The Crime Prevention Fund, this was one of the ones that was in and declared as part of the emergency. A lot of that had to do with you had an encumbrance at June and plus the balance is sitting at that time. That put it negative. You really didn't spend anything out of that fund. So, we've shown just the balance. Nothing has been shown that you're going to be paying anything out of there. I don't know why there was an encumbrance, but there was when we did the analysis. So, it's positive. That was good. Recreation Fund, okay. This is one that has changed. This has always been by itself. The majority of the revenues has been transferred in from the general fund. If it is not making or going in the red, it's always the general fund moving money over. We've -- the city has decided to move that under the general fund as its own department. Therefore, this fund is null and void. It's just paying out the last of the activity in '17, moving money over to pay for that and it will be zero. It should be zero now. So, we're going to see this one again, but in the general fund. Same thing with the EMS Fund. This one is primarily transferred in from the general fund. It has no other revenues, as you can see. So, that has now been moved to a department under the general fund. Lot cleaner. You don't have the approved transfers. Move those over, make your payments, so on and so forth.
And what payments were made out of the EMS Fund? What things, what kinds of things, if you can clarify?
Well, you would have some things for the ambulances and things like that and then materials and supplies that they would need.
Just to clarify, thank you.
Yeah. The nitty gritty, I'd have to go back and look.
That's okay. I just want a general for people to know.
Okay. Then the Bond Retirement Fund used to get, oh, I should say, used to get monies from the, sorry, well, it's from the tax settlement sheets. It's really general fund monies. They're obligated for part of your debt. That debt was paid off. The debt that was left in in here was general fund obligations. All you were doing was moving transfer monies over and making your payment. So, the city decided, why are we doing that extra step? We're just going to put that into the general fund and pay it directly from there and get away with no more transfers. This fund is now done. See, that was the easy one.
If only they were all that easy.
Okay. Instead of the general fund again, I want to go to B, C, H, and I. I want to start with the street fund.
I don't have a B. Do you all? You sure?
Mm-hmm. Vienna should have a B. You have a C?
I have a C, H, and I.
Okay.
No B, thank you.
It could have been a...
V was the first one?
B.
B as in boy.
You have a B.
B, C, H, and I.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's talk about the street fund. In here, you receive gas tax and MVL monies. That's coming from the County Auditor's Office. You'll look and see that those have been kind of flatlined for the forecasted periods. That has trended down a little bit. That's something that depends on, you know, what's coming through here, if there's any decreases in gas tax or the MVL licensing. Most places would flatline that without, you know, anything known to increase or decrease it. The other stuff that's in here is the expenditures. This is based off of in '17, the personnel that's actually being paid out of this fund and their benefits. Also in here is other things you're paying for the street, including street lighting, which is the fixed expenses, and then any materials and supplies that you would need for the road. As you look in the past, you have had transfers in the past from the general fund way back, long time ago, starting in 2008. There were advances into this fund from the general fund. Those are around $320,000-some thousand dollars, have never been paid back to this fund, which I'm going to get back to in a minute. So, we've taken out the transfers. Those were not put into the appropriations that I saw. And if you see the balance before the advance back to the general fund, we stay positive. However, you, this fund still owes $300-some thousand dollars back to the general fund. This is down here for you guys to decide if you want to pay this back out of this fund or are you going to forgive that loan. Basically, the general fund loaned money to this fund. These are old. We've talked about these when we've done the GAAP conversion. They're actually listed in the GAAP report as advances that were due to them back, due to the general fund. And we're showing them as long-term loans is what's happening.
And what year were they transferring?
First year is 2008. And then there was a couple more. So, you can't handle paying that all back right now. So, we did, we're showing like paying it back over five years. You could do it a different way. We don't see the fifth payment because it's past the five year. We didn't put, it's not in the '17. So, that's a discussion that you guys will have to have. Are you going to forgive this or are you going to pay it back? If you're going to forgive it, that money's not going to go back to the general fund, which when we get to the general fund, we're going to talk about. That would leave the balances at what they're showing above that line. Does that make sense? So, it would be for 2017, $151,000, '18, $190,000, '19, $225,000. But if you start paying those back, we're down to a $20,000 potential balance in 2021. Still positive, but look. Okay? Any questions about this one?
But if we forgive the $320,000, that means there's $320,000 less in the general fund that you've accounted for that you'll get to?
It is not in the general fund right now.
Well, that seems like a no-brainer.
Because you've already moved it over. But in, when we get to the general fund, it's kind of like this below the line feature, showing it coming in. So, we'll have the balance with the known factors and then this unknown factor can pay it back. Then we show the balances if you start paying it back over the five years.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, that's a decision council needs to make. Any other questions on this one? Okay. State Highway, Fund Three, which is the C. This is our first not-so-good-looking fund. Again, this one gets gas tax and MVL monies. It's at a less percentage than the street fund does based on a high revised code. Also in here for expenses, it has materials and supplies which you guys have been buying your salt out of this fund. And also, there's street lighting also paid out of here, which is your fixed expenditures. With trending as it is and keeping the revenues stagnant, which they're kind of decreasing in the prior years just tad, this fund is looking negative going out. This fund also owes money to the general fund, around $39,700. That's why it's below the line. If you paid that back, that's going to make this fund look worse. So, again, council needs to determine whether they want to pay this back or forgive this Also, you have one other fund that does street, which is the Permissive Tax Fund, which is Fund Five on your cash position report. It does and that take care of certain street-type items. If we're wanting to move some of these expenditures over there, which you'll need to relate to us, then we need to do a quick analysis on that fund even though it's not negative to make sure it can handle the now more expenditures that may be moved over there. Does that make sense? I can't just move, you know, things out of this fund and that fund and put it in another fund and cause a problem, basically, is what I'm telling you. So, this is a fund that really needs to have some discussion on what we're really going to do. And if we want to forgive that, if you guys want to forgive that loan or not. Any other questions on state?
And the street lighting from the State Highway Fund is only those on state highways?
I cannot confirm that. I do know the lateral is paid from here. I'm not quite sure where all the street lights are because it doesn't tell me that on the Duke Energy Belt. We would have to dig deeper on that one. Does that make sense?
Yep, but right now, we're good on that. Nothing, no findings or anything like that?
Not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Not at this time. Okay. Fund H and I, they're kind of weird little funds. They happen to show up because of the encumbrance with repayables. That's why they're in the emergency declaration. The stormwater really should be, there wasn't enough collected one year. That's being fixed with the county so that you get the assessments that you need to to pay for things for stormwater. So, right now, from the talks that we've had, that you will not overspend what you're bringing And there's no known repairs or projects right now that would cause us to go negative. It's not a true statement, from what I know.
So, revenue was being adjusted through the county process?
Yes.
You come in for this fund, but wasn't dumped into it at the time? Did it not?
It never came in. There is an assessment issue with the county.
That they didn't assess it in order to collect for like a following year. So, last year, I think, was, they didn't collect anything.
Right.
For 15, one of the years.
One of the years.
So, they're going to go back and assess it and then go back and get that money?
They can't go back. They can only move forward. So, they, they put it back on to, to collect. And I think it's twice a year collection now. I could be wrong on that.
And then on the building assessment, that really is money that's coming in and should be going right back out. It's more like an agency fund. So, it's like a permit that you're collecting and then it goes to the state, correct? Yeah. Okay, those were the easier funds. Any questions on those?
So, is that still showing a deficit?
No. It's, what happened was, and that's why we have little notes down here, part of the reason was we had some outstanding encumbrances, which we have to take into account when we do our analysis. So, those did not come to pass on the expense side, or they did, but you had monies at that time. And so, now, with those being positive, that's not, this is, this is a recovery plan that makes you go positive for these funds.
Perfect, thank you.
So, you have a problem with your state highway because it's not. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, then we need to have a plan in place to figure out what we're going to do there. All right, now the fund one, the general fund. Everybody's dying to talk about, right? Okay, again, this is based off of the three years of actual. We're looking at analysis to see what have you spent in the past. Also, we looked at your payables. What was really being paid in '17 that was for prior years? We took that into account. Those payables are in the '17 numbers so that you have an accurate description of what you're going to pay for '17. But then you take into account, you're not going to be paying prior year expenses in '18, '19, '20, and '21 because we're going to stay current on our disbursements. Does that make sense? There's one thing to know. Revenues. As you can tell, 2017 is based upon projections here at the city. The income tax is at 17.1. This is based primarily over discussions with Tim Maloney and his staff, looking at what had actually been collected through April, then looking at trends of what is actually collected in May through December and where we really should be by the end of the year. And that projection is around 17.1 with now knowing what you've gotten through April. So, that's a little higher than what was projected, I think, last year for '17. Does that make sense? Also, for this number, you guys have three incentive agreements with Paycor, CDK, and I always forget the third one.
I sure forget.
Yes, that one. In there, they have to meet certain obligations and you will give them back part of an incentive for meeting those obligations and coming into this city. Normally, on your books, that is, there's monies deducted from the income tax revenues in the general fund and moved to, I believe, Fund 89 so that it is separated from the general fund. That money is also put into a separate bank account so that the money is there for when those companies meet that agreement because if they don't, they don't get the incentive amount. So, you have the monies to pay them back. Those monies were then put back in the general fund on this for paper in each year, '14, '15, '16, and onward. So, that 720.1 includes the potential incentive monies that are due to those three companies. Does that make sense? Now, to do that, I had to still come back down to the bottom line. Page eight. You'll see a line that says earnings tax incentive slash return. In this amount, it has the incentive disbursements that occurred in '14, '15, and '16 and was projected for '17 through '21. That means in the historical years, it's a zeroing out effect. There is no, I got too much revenues and not enough disbursements or vice versa. So, it's still even-steven, basically. Does that make sense? If you would go and compare that to what's on your financials or on the system, we will not agree on those two areas. But net-wise, balance, we'll agree. But for trending and seeing what income tax is really doing and then also the disbursements, we've placed it back into the general fund. Does that make sense? Because it's technically general fund monies. We're just moving it over.
The total amount collected will show in the regular collections on page four of the starting point.
Yeah.
Where before, we would take that off the top, put it in Fund 89 right off the bat. So, we never actually showed the total amount in the general fund. But now, it will show in the general fund, but there will be a separate line zeroing that out or to make the difference.
Correct. Plus then, any analysis that the City Treasurer's Office makes, it will come back to these numbers because theirs includes the incentive agreement staying intact and having the whole gross amount, I guess is what we should say, the gross collections.
They will still take that money out and put it in a separate account?
Yes.
That's very good. Thank you.
Okay. With, okay, so that, that being known, so you can see that it was projected 17.1 based on talks that we've had and looking at analysis that was presented to us from the City Treasurer's Office. All revenues from '18 on have been flatlined based upon talks and conservatism from the city that we've heard of. So, keep that in mind as we keep going through this. So, '17's been increased based upon projections, then '18 through '21 has really kept stagnant. Okay? Now, then we get into all the departments. So, I'm going to talk generalities. You guys ask me any questions you want. I'll try to answer anything you have. First of all, personal services. That's your largest expenditure by far in the general fund. No matter what it is, you took it out of the departments and put it by itself, it would be the largest. What has, what is in these numbers? For 2017, it is based on actuals through May. It is based upon paying the OPNF amount that was due from prior years. So, catching that up and not having a liability with them anymore. Paying the buybacks that we're doing '16 plus what was due in '17. So, we're making two payments in one year, which is not being projected out in the other years. Looking at where our salaries and our staffing levels are for each department now. And then trending out in '18 through '21, step increases, which are around 1%. And then workers' comp is also included in here with a 2% increase in that in each year to be conservative as well. There's no other increases on insurances at this time. That's being held the same. And then...
And the only salary increases are step increases, not?
Step increases. We have the levels that we talked about for the departments, things like that.
And then the pension payments are figured in, what we, the bulk we owed that got caught up by the end of this year are figured in the '17 numbers?
In the '17 numbers, yes. So, that would be in the Fire Department on page six and the Police Department on page six as well. That's why their '17 numbers are so large and then they kind of go back down for '18 on out. That's why you have this huge spike.
Can I just ask, maybe you can, I'm just looking at some of the department personal services and there's some differences that make no sense to me in the Mayor's Office, the Building Department, where there's, those are sizable chunks of a difference from 2016 to 2017. It's the same people there. And I'm not sure what would be, what would be, I mean, the Mayor, you know, the Mayor Personal Services is a difference of, you know, $17,000, which is like 20%.
I mean, some of that might...
And so, I'm just, if there's some numbers we're missing, or the Service Director's Office is $17,000, which is 17%. So, which is, those are just big and I don't know what would explain those.
Part of it, they certainly wouldn't be that large, but part of it might be like where longevity payments weren't made.
There would be some, it could be. I'd have to look. I don't know off the top of my head. I know some of the bigger ones. I know some of the things, but those, I'd have to go back in our work papers and what.
But I just feel like a question is the 2016 numbers would be what we should have paid, what we incurred last year and the 20, as opposed to what we actually paid out? I mean, it's not cash.
No.
No.
It's what you paid.
It's what we paid.
That's why '17 has all the payables included in there that include the '16 obligations. I can't put in there what you didn't pay. I can only put in the historical what you did pay. And we don't include encumbrances that potentially could have captured those in those departments. So, this is cash basis only. So, this is based upon what we actually, the city actually paid in those historical years.
So, potentially, without checking under, say, Mayor Personal Services, if we didn't pay longevity and that, that was owed to that department?
Potentially.
In 2016, but we have those payments figured into, you know, '17, '18, and that. Potentially, that could be the reason.
Potentially. But I will definitely, this is why this is a discussion draft.
But from '15, if you're in the Mayor, oh, the Mayor, oh, that's clerk of courts, never mind. The clerk of courts, there's like a 25, $35,000 increase from '15 to '16. And that might be somebody going full-time, though. And then it goes back down again in '17. The Mayor's clerk of courts. There's like a huge jump in '16.
That's also, you have a contract person there now, too, I believe, instead of a personal services.
So, would the 2018 and 2019 numbers would be carried forward of what a year should be? Because you got, the last year and this year are not real numbers.
I'll have to look. I can't answer that. I understand where you're going, though.
Yes, '18 and '19. '18 and out should be a true reflection of what an actual year expenditure should be because you don't have something missing or extra added.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is also why we're discussing this, is this discussion draft and not the final document. Those were the main things of our personal services. Is there any other discussion or questions on that piece in any of the departments at this time? I mean, you guys get to look at this and talk about things. Okay. The other expenditures, again, the payables are included for '17 that were from prior years to catch you back up. Then there's like a 1% increase, I think, going out for the other years and that's more of a cost of living increase that may or may not occur. Normally, we see some sort of increase going out further. Normally, expenditures don't completely stay the same. People's cost of business goes up. The things that I did want to point out, though, page six, in your appropriations, you had put under the Police Department purchases of two cruisers, which we have under the principal and interest because you would have... which we have under the principal and interest because you would have to, as far as we know, do a debt instrument, whether it's a lease, a loan, wherever that is. Normally, we see those for five years. That's a purchase of two cruisers based upon what we saw in the appropriations passed by council. Also, under EMS, which is the department that came from Fund twenty-seven, on that same page, in here is also debt. And that was a purchase of an ambulance, that's your principal and interest, which was also in the city council approved appropriations as well. So those have been, that has been included in here as well. Most of the fixed expenditures that you see on here are mostly Duke utility expenditures. And then on page eight, you see the recreation department coming into this fund that we talked about earlier. A couple of other things on page eight. In the middle of the page, we have debt service. And you'll see payments in seventeen through twenty-one. This is that general obligation from Fund thirty-four that we talked about previously coming into the general fund. That's why it's here under this, instead of under a different department. Also, here you'll see the non-departamental expenditures. And some of the bigger ones here are the retirees' healthcare, C nine trusts, and then also the earnings incentive slash returns. Those are the biggest expenditures there. With the retirees and the C nine trusts, you see large expenditures there in two thousand and seventeen for payables that were due, plus what's predicted to be paid in seventeen. We also do not show any transfers going back out like there wasn't historical and what had to be happened in seventeen to close out certain funds. There's just no money to really move out of the general fund, as you can see. So this is kind of like the first look. If nothing happens with the trends that are occurring and flatlining revenues, in five years, you're still projecting a negative balance. And then that last page, on page nine, is those return of advances and what it would do to the general fund. So if you don't do those, you wouldn't do any of those, it would be the line at the top. That's a very fast, pointing out some top things. We can do it, if you have questions, we can go over them. If there's stuff I need to look into, I can do that as well. Some of the stuff I know off the top of my head, it's been a long journey. Some of them I don't know off the top of my head.
It's on my knees. It's attached to the back of the general fund.
I got state for happy.
Looking at how things stand right now, based upon our, well, current staffing levels, for the most part. By doing nothing at all, we still have five years with worst case scenario, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand plus short.
If you do those advances, yes.
If we, if we do the advances, which in a way, if we require those funds to pay them back, which, we lent it from the general fund, we lent it from ourselves to ourselves, basically, in order to cover our expenses with the anticipation that the road funds from the gas tax and the federal funds and state funds would increase and come back to us, which obviously didn't happen. And so those funds remain without the capability of being able to pay it back. We had bills and obligations that the city had to pay. So we either had to pay it from the revenue coming in from the gas tax or pay it from what we had in the general fund. One way or another, we had to pay the bill.
Correct.
So the bills have already been paid, expenditures have been made. Right now, it's like an accounting issue, which is showing that this, you still owe this money, even though it was your money to start with. So it would just be something we'd have to discuss to see, okay, are there any negatives to forgiving the loans, basically? If there is any negative to the city outside of, we wouldn't get that money back if that money would come in. However, if the money would come in, it would go to those funds. So we wouldn't have to think about transferring money to it again, which we probably wouldn't do in the future. But, so that would be something that we would have to discuss to see if we do want to do that, to forgive those loans. The two, one thing, the main thing would be today, well, five years from now, they have the bottom line still at only eight hundred and fifty-seven. Versus one point one.
And just so that you guys understand, this plan that has to go to the commission has to show a recovery in five years. So if you were to take this to the Financial Plan Supervision Commission right now, it would automatically be rejected because there's, there's not a positive balance. So somewhere within the next five years, it has to have a positive balance, so.
But you're what I'm saying, is doing nothing.
Right.
Doing nothing is not an exception.
Now looking under the C nine trust, and for two thousand and seventeen, it's forecasted nine hundred and forty-two thousand. But it hadn't been paid for the previous three years. But then you have five hundred for all the next years. So if nine hundred and forty-two is covering four years, why is the five hundred for a year there? The, the membership of the C nine trust is actually going down, does it work?
Correct, that's been told to us. So I can't tell you about previous years. We've had discussions with renovations, and we have been told that liability that was due at the end of sixteen has been paid. And that is what we have been confirmed so far by your company that you're using renovations. So I have no further information or documentation that has been sent to us that has proven from them that you were owed that. Because we directly asked them in a meeting if you were, they were owed anymore for previous years. So with that being said, that's the information we have today. I can't, I can't put in here the unknowns of if there, if there's potentially more back up. Because I've asked that question and have been told that that's not the case. So going forward, it's based approximately on what you would have to pay out on the numbers that you have right now.
But the numbers you have right now, if you're going with nine forty-two, that's over four years.
That is this year's plus last year's payables.
Right.
Based on what we've been told by renovations, that's all I can go with right now. That's the known that I know.
And I know that they have not been paid, I got confirmation today, because I followed my mom's call, I'll say that. They still don't eat quite good, and we've given many of the retirees' phones.
Well, we got, we got two things going on. We got C nine, and we got millennial. So we would have to determine between the two. I have not been presented any information, neither has Gifford on that. And until we get information confirming that, I really can't build that into this plan at this time, right?
So the five hundred a year, because if you're going by these numbers, and I'm sorry if I just don't understand this, it would show two hundred and fifty a year if you're going for the, for fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Okay, so it's my understanding, and if I'm wrong, then this is part of the discussion we need to have. You have a hundred and seventy-four, they get, turn some, two thousand dollars and stuff, plus five hundred dollars on optical and dental.
Family, that's a family, not personal.
Okay.
The five hundred is family, but the twenty-two fifty is per, and they're all like... If they need that much.
Yeah. So you've never paid out in total everything that's due, because from what I, what we've seen from renovations, what technically could be potentially paid out, because things have to come in for them to pay that out. So this was based off an estimate on that. If that is something that we need to look at with better information, please present that to us. But I need some documentation to back that up. Same thing with the retirees' healthcare. That's based upon, we've seen anywheres from three hundred and some thousand dollars paid out to over five hundred thousand dollars paid out in a year. That's an approximate.
I understand that, that is, those are percent, I understand.
We can definitely look at that piece, but I need, we need documentation. Anything else? Any other question? Again, this is with revenues flatlined and with expenditures based upon the known factors that we have seen with union agreements and other things, and then potential one percent increases for steps and things like that, and then also cost of living expenditures. So, and with nothing else that has been presented to us, if there's other numbers that we need to look at to further, I think Donna has, and Jim, and the mayor, they all have our email and fund numbers. We can look at those and recalculate some of the numbers. That's what we're here to do, is to make sure that we have the best presentation for you.
And the property taxes, even though there's reevaluation going on this year, those are flatlined because I, if you can address, I know the answer to this, but again, they haven't had the benefit. Why that is an increase, because they won't give you those numbers as a result.
Well, okay, so the county, you're in a revaluation year, right? So your property taxes are getting, your assess, your assess values are getting reassessed. So potentially, next year, because it'll be on the property tax revenues that are collected next year from residents, could see an increase. We have contacted the county to see if they could give us an estimate on what that increase could be for the city. At this time, they are not able to give us an estimate because they're still in that process. After two thousand and eight, things changed, things weren't working like they always were. So your evaluations weren't really seeing a lot of increases. We've gotten ten years out, potentially you could see that. But until we get something from the county auditor's office stating that they think that it could potentially be this type of increase, that's why that's been a flatline for now. So, does that answer that?
To our, in a way, to our advantage at this point in time, at that reevaluation, in that amount. Because if, if we already had those numbers in, in two thousand and seventeen numbers, it really doesn't benefit us in like two thousand and eighteen. So when the reevaluations do come out, potentially, and I don't wish this on anybody, believe me.
Yeah, really, I hear, I know what you're going to say.
If the property value assessment does go up, and your, your tax duplicate goes up on, over a period of a year, it could affect the amount of revenue that we would receive from the county. So based upon that, knowing that won't come about for a while, that could be one item that we would put in our recovery plan. You know, a slight increase in, in property taxes, not knowing a dollar amount, but it kind of, it's a little feather that we could use as one of the items that we would submit and we would put our recovery plan together. But we really don't know that number, so it's, you know.
We like to confront, too, and that's, that's a third-party source that we can talk to to see what they potentially think. And they're usually pretty good at, at knowing what the increases would be. But with the reval year, they really don't want to do that until that's really complete. And then you have border revisions that can change that even as well. So they are flatlined because that's what we had talked about. That's what the presentation was asked of us. This is your recovery plan, so we can make changes. We just need to make sure that what, those changes are being presented fairly and completely. I guess would be the best answer for that.
If I could just follow up on this, they can change, the council can change the assumptions. They have to be reasonable changes. For example, and to the top of my, if you just want to do one really quick and dirty and be done with it is, there's reasonable ways to say, oh, earnings tax will go up a hundred thousand dollars a year for four years. And if you go back traditionally C nine trust money, when I was on council, the highest number I remember being, when we were putting, when we were actually doing it, was like three hundred and eighty thousand. So lower that a thousand, a hundred thousand. Four years of those two, then that's at eight hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it's that kind of thing is possible. It doesn't take account, we need to fix streets, we need to buy new equipment, all the other things that are not included in here. Somebody deserves a raise sometime, you know, that kind of thing. That stuff's not included, but that is at least a part of the equation they can look at.
Correct. That's why it's a living, breathing document, too. Because like you said, you talk, you talk about, say, the roof blows off the building here, what fund's going to have to pay for it? And that was not projected, and that is not something you look at. But also in this, we're going to ask you soon, when we get into other parts, is to come up with a capital improvement plan, which would include vehicles, repairs to not only the streets, but also your buildings and other things. I mean, we've had other places, they've cut all that. Eventually, you have to get back to it. And so that has to be in the plan down the road to come out. Because you have to take those intangibles into play. Because if you don't, we're going to be right back in what we're doing right now, which I don't think anybody wants to do. So we want to make sure we're planning for the future, trying to live within our means, and still providing services. So reasonableness is key. That's what we're here to do, is to take what your suggestions are and look at all of the effects that that could have on the city, whether it's a revenue, expense, or whatever the case may be. Right? Yeah, but this is your plan, so. You're welcome to look it over. Again, if you have questions, please let us know. We can look into our numbers, and there's a lot of numbers here. I'm not going to tell you know where every penny is, or what every penny was spent on in the past. I have a fairly good idea of most of it. Some of it I don't know off the top of my head, but we can definitely look into it if something looks kind of odd.
The other thing I'll say on the actual expenditures, I mean, yeah, we can go look at stuff, but all that information on actual expenditures, you can get from the city auditor's office because that's where we got it from. Past reports, they can run you a report that'll tell you any expenditure out of any fund, any department, any line item.
I asked them lots of questions, just like all the other departments.
So this is, as far as the plan, as it starts, as far as this is where we are today. Then the next step then is to come up with suggestions to, over the next five years, reduce that eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, well, used in a hypothetical way, forgive the other. And to reduce that to zero and actually show positive revenue at the end of five years. And we're only projecting a five, but we'd like to, you know, continue to grow. Because that growth would be what would drive in capital improvement plan as well. And if we would try to implement a capital improvement plan with this plan right now, as it is, we wouldn't be able to get out of this thing in five years. But, but behind that, open up with that capital improvement plan, it would be something that would kind of be kicked into place, you know, moving forward at the end of the five years.
Right, and that also is a living, breathing document. So if you think you can do something in one year, and then something happens and the money's not there, that doesn't mean you still have to do it in that year. That just means that you have a need that you've put on there, and it may have to be moved back. Or you find a need that was down the road that might have to move forward. So that plan is also not sitting everything in stone. I just want to make that clear because we've had that issues at other places. But at least presents to you the things that you know need to happen in the future, and you can change that order based upon what you guys decide. Does that make sense? I don't want anybody to think that ties your hands, it doesn't. It's also a plan that can change, but it's a good tool.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the next step then would be, we would take this and then start coming up with some ideas as far as how to make this go away. By, you know, increasing the revenue coming in, decreasing the expenditures, you know, going out. the revenue coming in, decreasing the expenditures, you know, going out. And so, any thoughts in that we need to put together to submit to the planning committee or the financial planning committee or whatever it's called? So we, ideally timewise, we need to come up with some ideas put together to reduce this number within the next couple of weeks.
Within the next couple of weeks. This plan is actually due to the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission, I believe, on July eighth, which is a Saturday. They set the next meeting for the July sixth. So within that time period, there needs to be discussion on, like you said, Mr. Sankar, in revenue enhancements or expenditure reductions. Anna Mary and I are happy to incorporate those, run the numbers, put it in, give you back a forecast to show you what it looks like, because before the plan can be taken to the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission, you as a body have to adopt the plan. So not only do we have to have, you know, the suggestions and get a projection, a five-year forecast that shows the general fund going positive and also the state highway fund, but that also then has to be approved by council, the whole thing, before it can be taken to, to the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission.
Or if, if we come up with a plan or somebody gives a suggestion and who says, let's put this in here, it's gonna save us a billion dollars. We say, that's great, we put it in here and you guys, you auditors, you look at it and say, eh, you know, it's, number-wise, it could work. And so we put that in the plan and then we submit it to that committee, they look at it and say, eh, we, that's not gonna fly, we're not gonna let you use that. They can do that and reject.
They can. They absolutely can reject the plan.
And then you have thirty days to come up with a new one, is that correct?
On the other hand, the same idea is, looks good, comes through on paper, and we submit it to them and they say, yeah, run with it. And then when we go research it to find that we really can't implement that due to some legal obligations or state regulations or something to that effect, which we didn't know about and we put that in, then we would have to then tell them, eh, this isn't gonna fly.
That's correct.
Or, and then they'll say, then go back and find something else to take.
Correct. Bottom line, the commission just wants to see the general fund or whatever fund is, got you into the emergency status, which it wasn't the general fund, but it is now an issue. They want to see that go positive. So it's up to, you know, mayor and council to come up with what you want to change.
Is there any disadvantage to just, to asking, to have an ordinance prepared to forgive those transfers? That would, is there any reason not to do that prior to the adoption of this?
It doesn't have to be done prior to the adoption of this, those advances have been out there. Those are just decisions you guys are gonna have to make. Just, we gotta know which way you want to go to build it into the plan, so.
I guess what you were thinking, if you had something by Tuesday.
We could change, we could have numbers, what we would be looking at.
But, well, council could agree on Tuesday with an explanation of what these were, is always something that the administration would agree upon as well. I don't know, can't speak for them, but I can't, I don't know why they wouldn't unless they need it out there to justify something, I don't know.
Maybe we can bring it up under new business. At least it would give you a clean, a clean start. You would know where you were, unless everybody just agreed that's what you were gonna do and you would just build that into the plan by a certain date, you would do that.
We don't care if you've taken action or not, we just need to know verbally what your intent is and know that the action will follow.
Okay.
As far as those advances.
Any other questions? It's a lot to absorb here. You got, I can't even imagine how much, how many hours you all have worked on this.
I have a great staff.
All right, any other questions that we have of them? Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Do you, what is your pleasure, you just want to take these home and absorb this and?
We ought to set up another meeting.
Yeah.
I guess I'll ask this before you go and you don't have to answer it right now, but in your travels, if there were some things that you've seen in other communities or municipalities that they're doing that we could possibly do, or something that they're doing that we could possibly change, or, you know, if, if you have any suggestions on those lines, let us know. I'm not asking you to say that now, but I mean, you might be up in Steubenville and then.
I'm not going to Cleveland area. They have a lot more fiscal projects that way, yeah.
And you see what they're doing, you know, you may want to consider something, looking into this and it could possibly help you out on the bottom line here. I mean, you're not, I guess you're not really able to make recommendations, but you, you know, if you say, yeah, something, I happen to see this up in wherever, maybe worth looking into, just feel for thought. Thank you. Thanks for all your work. Thanks for staying out there all day.
Thank you. Do you want to set, to set another meeting now or do you want to wait till Tuesday and decide?
Can we request the mayor to come? I would really like to hear.
I'm sorry.
Someone's asked.
Request the mayor.
Said ask the mayor to come.
Oh.
I mean, I would like to hear.
You want to do that during the day, probably?
Well, I can't do that, so.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be good if you did, but I'm, I'm sure he's, he's, he's seen this prior.
I'm just curious what his thoughts are on trying to make it work as well.
I don't know, I mean, it, we're gonna take hour until Tuesday and I'm hoping that either one, you can always set it down and change it on Tuesday, somebody finds out. Because we, we, we have to have it approved by council by July the sixth.
Should be.
Ready to present to them.
And I would suggest that if anybody has ideas, to let Joe or myself or the mayor know, so that we can forward those things on to Anna Mary and April and they can give us the numbers of what those, that might be, what your ideas might be.
Myself or the mayor know?
So that when we do meet again, we can put those numbers into the spreadsheets to see exactly where we are.
Yeah.
I know the mayor has a couple of things in the, in the works, but just from briefly speaking with him this afternoon, that he may have some answers to in the next few days. So we'll see. So I don't know if anybody, if you want to set it now or if you want to wait till Tuesday and set it, it probably would be helpful if we could set something now and then if there's a problem with it, we can change it Tuesday. What works for everybody. I know if, if you want the state auditors to be here, they would prefer like an early meeting like this, five thirty or six, because they're staying over before their long drive home. So I don't know if next Wednesday works for people. Okay? So next Wednesday would be?
Twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth, June the twenty-eighth at six o'clock, if that's okay with everybody?
Let's do that.
So I will have the clerk's office put that announcement out to the sunshine committee or the group. And then if we need to change it, we can do that at council. So we'll just plan on next Wednesday, six o'clock here, and I'll confirm with April and Anna Mary to make sure they can be here too, and the mayor. Okay? Is there any other business, any, any other discussion about this document? Okay, if not, let's, we'll adjourn. We'll see you Tuesday night at council meeting and then Wednesday at six o'clock here for committee.
And then maybe Thursday.
Thank you, please.